I can't see us.
That thing is supposed to just come on on its own.
Yeah.
You gotta start. Quick on this error.
Oh, yes.
Oh, yes.
Can everyone on Zoom hear us?
Ah, yes.
Testing, can you hear us?
Yes.
I can't hear them, no.
The OBS again.
Sorry, Susan, just a second.
Their list of like type A one, type B.
I have definitely.
I have more, you want such as?
Yeah, maybe for.
Yeah.
Some participants, can someone just speak so I can see if this is working?
Hi, can you hear us?
I heard you.
We're not able to hear you, sorry.
Okay, are you hearing us now?
Oh, yeah, this is this is better, yeah.
Okay.
Wonder if it's the mic.
Yeah. It might be the microphone.
Towards me. I think it's gonna be good.
Okay.
Awesome, let's try.
Yeah, all right. Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. As a preliminary matter, my name is Susan McCarthy and I started as the Chair of the Board of Appeals. Could I be to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me? Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lisa Botticelli here, Alisa Allen here, Michael O'Mara, John Brasher.
Yeah.
Jim Mundeni.
Here.
Mark Hor. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Leslie Snell here, Nikki Sheriff.
Here.
William Saad.
Here.
And anticipated speakers on the agenda, please respond in the affirmative. America Ahern from Ahern Design Landscape Studio.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Good morning, this open meeting of the Town of Nantucket Board of Appeals is being conducted remotely pursuant to Chapter Two of the Acts of 2023. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will not feature public comment. For this meeting, the Board of Appeals is convening in person and by video conference via Zoom app. As posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. For Zoom meetings, please note the meeting is being recorded, some attendees are participating by video conference. Be aware that other attendees and viewers may be able to see you. Do not screen share your computer, anything broadcast may be captured by the recording. All supporting materials that have been provided, members of this body are available on the town's website unless otherwise noticed. The public is encouraged to follow along using the post agenda unless I know otherwise. We're now going to turn to the first item on the agenda, but before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda, on the agenda after they include, sorry, after they conclude their remarks, I will go down the line of members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your microphone or computer when you are not speaking, please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until I yield the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in a conversation with other members, please do so through me taking care to identify yourself. Finally, each vote in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. So I'll call to order the, this meeting, the Tuesday, May 30th, 2023 at 11:22. Would someone want to make a motion to approve the agenda as drafted? All right, so Lisa makes that motion with someone second.
Second.
And then John seconds, okay. So roll call vote to approve the agenda myself. Hi, Lisa.
Hi, Alisa.
Hi.
Michael.
Hi.
And John.
Hi.
Okay, that is approved. I didn't see any minutes to approve, no, okay, there aren't any minutes. So the first and really only order of business today is Surfside Crossing Final Site Plan Engineering Review and Review of Conditions, although today. We're focusing on the landscape plans, architectural plans, and the community building. And so I have from last week that our goal is to note any deficiencies in the final plans. And so we can start with. We can start with landscape since America is here. Did anyone have questions or comments?
Excuse me.
Sure.
Were you going to designate the board?
Yes.
Oh, that's. Sorry, I skipped over that. Oh, it's so funny, it's not on this one, but it was on something else that I saw. So, yeah, I don't have it on this agenda, but it, but it was on, is it on the posting? Yeah, okay, okay. Yes, not on this one. Okay, so let's backtrack, the first order of business is, is that okay? It was on the posting.
It's on the posting, yeah.
Yeah, so that's fine, so, okay. Yeah, okay, so designate, so we're gonna designate the sitting board for Surfside Crossing Review. So this means. I just have this written down somewhere, but so this means who's gonna, who will be voting on the final. Decision to either approve the hack decision and ZVA decision with conditions as amended and conforms to the finer plans or conforms. But for the noted issue or doesn't conform, and then that's what decision goes to building department and building commissioner will issue a permit based on.
Like Susan, sorry. It's not on the posting, I was just informed, so disregard.
Oh, okay.
Just move on to.
Just move on.
Reviewing, thank you.
Okay, we'll deal with that next time then. All right, so back to the landscape plan then. I had one question, but I just, I just answered in what you just admitted, so. Does anyone for the landscape plan have anything for America that they would want to bring up?
There's a way to get the plan on the.
I'm sorry to interject, it is in the posting, it wasn't on the packet that was posted on the website, so that's what I was trying to look at both of those. So, yes, it is on the posting to designate the board for this.
Okay, so can we designate it if it's on the posting?
Posted.
But not on the one that, but not, why don't, just that the public.
The posting is what's important, but I would just suggest because of the general controversial nature of this project that maybe we wait.
Yeah.
And do that at your next meeting and we'll make sure it's on the posting as well as the agenda in the packet.
I agree, because I don't, yeah, I agree.
Is it possible to put the plan on the screen? Is it, they're just really small and.
Two string chips.
So, I, I want to basically.
Yeah, this is the new one, it's just.
This is, I picked them up last week. Well, it looks like, I mean, my question is, it looks like you, you.
Oh, yeah.
Show trash.
So the, so we filed before last meeting, the final stand.
Yeah, and I have that.
Which exactly, so that's.
But it's really hard to see like where, I, how big are these trash bins?
So this would be enclosed fence area of 10 by 6, which would have contained the garbage.
Okay, where does that show on your plans, what sheet is that on?
We're getting that on the screen.
Right, okay, yeah, because it's, it's hard to read these.
It's been noted on the sheet 114 and.
Yeah, I have 114.
114, so.
Yeah, but it's in terms of size.
Okay, so it's in scale.
Is it redetectable?
Oh, it's, oh.
So can you tell me, tell me what they are?
So they are.
This stuff is just really hard to see, so 10 by 14 fence area.
Yes.
And that's for trash and recycling, because this legend says just recycling.
Yeah, so trash and recycling, yeah.
And how often will the trash get picked up?
I would have, I guess Jamie, if he's available to present the file.
Yeah, maybe because there's these two.
Okay.
You go to L15 maybe?
14.
Well, 15 has the.
L15.
Oh, 14, either one, I highlighted L15, but L14 has the legend, because it looks like the mailboxes have also been brought out to each building. And I want to get more information about what those look like.
Size.
Okay, packages, all that stuff, so.
All right.
So, you need it bigger?
Yeah, I think if you can blow it up so people can see the, the symbols. The dark gray boxes are the trash bins.
And you said those are 10 by 14?
No, they would be more, I'm sorry, it would be 10 by 6.
6 by 10.
Or 6 by 10, yes.
Okay.
And so how many, how many trash barrels is that? And every dumpster inside?
It's a bit answer, and but I don't know, Jamie could clarify, the plan would be that community didn't have a trash removal as a part of the weekly or by, like, twice a week maintenance.
Right, so one dumpster, or is there going to be separate dumpsters for non-recyclable?
That's correct, would be separate, like each building will have a dumpster, and again, Jamie, if you can clarify, you had a.
We need four dumpsters, yeah.
Recyclable, glass, plastic, non.
I don't know, my office, we have two dumpsters, one's for cardboard only, but then the other one is just all trash and recycling, it's a single stream.
And they, do they sort that?
I think so, I mean, you have to, we sort it in the office, but you.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I think, won't that be controlled by?
That's commercially, you're talking about.
But won't that be controlled, yeah, so won't that be controlled by the HOA?
Yeah, but we don't get to see those. So I'm just curious about what the plan is, because it doesn't seem like it uses a lot of trash. Depending on how often it's picked up.
And I can clarify that if you have more detail for you next time. I, I know there was the talk to maybe create a plan of, of twice a week, having a combination to be part of the neighborhood. I think it's something more of a response could be provided.
So how many units are in each building? How many units? What is this little area serving, how many?
You mean each building?
No, each trash bin, how many people are they serving?
So each building would have a van on enclosure.
One enclosure per building, okay.
That's correct.
Are they the dark?
Yeah. They're the dark.
Yeah, the darkest.
Yeah.
Rectangles.
Yeah.
So.
Are any of them in parking spaces?
No, they are all.
They're all.
I don't, like, for instance, I don't see one for the building in upper right hand corner.
And in the two that are building 15 and 16, that's one larger area combined for both of them.
That's correct.
And then where is number 13? Behind the building, is that the one that's behind at the end of the parking area?
Yes.
And then where is number 12?
Yeah. They might, we might have to expand that share between 12 and 13. For both of the buildings.
Where's the one with the house?
The house is right behind, as you can see, the bullet treatment, there's an all area next to the basement walkout. It would be on the left side.
Oh, I see, where there's a, a tree right by it, that, that whole fenced area is.
Correct.
Yeah. And then building 10 and 9 seem to share one. And where is building eight? And it looks like building three is missing too, unless I'm missing them. I just want to make sure there's enough.
So I don't look right, it's like, it's like we think one and two buildings are sharing, sometimes we had to, but they didn't like pre-calculated with the. Right, and so I just use a decent amount of boxes.
Okay, so, but you're gonna put one per building?
Yes.
And then we'll get some indication about how often and how it's gonna be, what, how they're separated.
That's correct.
Madam Chair, can I ask a more general question, just as a reminder, how many people? Can occupy each building?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking too.
Okay.
Yeah, but how many people?
Yeah. How many people occupy each building?
So that we can understand how much trash is generated.
And just, I want to know, just for other reasons, for parking, and I know I'm backtracking, but I wasn't.
So, I, I don't know if we have, let me see if I have a breakdown of it.
It was on, it was on one of their things, they had the breakdown of the bedrooms for buildings.
Yeah.
It's roughly 270 bedrooms, right?
280, something divided by 14. Three, 283 bedrooms.
Divided by, so it's roughly 20 bedrooms a building. Whether 15 buildings, 17, sorry, 18, 18 buildings.
So, so it's 283 divided by 18?
Many of those bedrooms would have two people in it.
Yeah, so let's just say max or average. 16. That's, that's bedrooms, right? So 16 times 2. Okay, and that's. Is that right, so 32 people per building, excellent, I can see that at the time.
Because you took 283 divided by 18, and you came up with 16 bedrooms.
Times two people.
Yeah, I mean, it might be a little less than that, I assume, I mean, if people have children, but studios would probably have two, might have two people, one bedroom would have two people.
So probably 30 people per, per building with children.
It's, I, I, yeah, I mean, I have concern that there's just not enough trash. In buildings, it depending on how, how often it's getting picked up, if it's getting picked up every couple days or every day, then it's probably fine.
Can Jamie Feely answer that, or we're not taking it public?
I don't, I think he's, he's not public, he, I don't think he counts as public, he's.
He doesn't count as public.
Yeah, so. Jamie, are you there, do you want to answer that? Or try to?
So, Madam Chair, I can answer any questions that you may have. With regards to the occupancy, that's a building code slash fire code.
Right, guys, Alisa, sorry, can you identify yourself, please?
Yes, I'm sorry, Paul Haverty, Blatman Bobrowski, Haverty and Silverstein, representing Surfside Crossing LLC. So the question with regards to the number of occupants in a building is a question, you know, for the fire code and slash or building code. It's not something that's limited by the decision from the Housing Appeals Committee. It's, it really, it can vary. I, I mean, I can tell you, growing up as a kid, I had, you know, seven brothers and sisters, I've shared a bedroom with three brothers at a time. It's not outside, you know, the realm of possibility, and there's nothing that prohibits that.
Yeah, I, I think, I don't think that's the question, I think they're just trying to get to thinking about the trash receptacles, like how, what's the maximum use that? Might be there to make sure that, that the plan shows enough. Or adequate.
So I think the question was, getting to the point is, how often will trash be picked up and how big are the dumpsters inside these enclosures?
Yeah.
So I, I can leave the second question to the architects, they can take a look at the plans and see what they say. In terms of the frequency of pickup, it's going to be as frequently as necessary.
Because you truly schedule, and I would like to know the schedule, like a promised schedule.
Well, again, that is something, first of all, this is a question that is really outside the scope of this review. The, the issue of trash pickup wasn't something that was discussed during the Housing Appeals Committee process. It wasn't an issue that was part of a condition that was issued in the original decision, and the board's review here is limited to reviewing the final plans and. In providing feedback to, to indicate that they're consistent with the plans plus conditions that have been previously approved. This is, this is really going beyond the scope of what your review is. The HAC decision specifically states that the board has not, had the board actually chosen to issue its own decision consistent with the HAC's decision, you were prohibited from adding additional conditions.
Right, I totally disagree, it's Lisa Botticelli, I mean, our purview is to make sure that this development is, is run successfully and that we don't have garbage issues and that it looks good and it's maintained well, and how do we know that?
And Madam Chair, through you, to the attorney representing Jamie Feely, are you saying that you will not answer my question? How often trash pickup, are you saying?
I, I don't, I don't believe that that has been determined, and it's something that is going to be determined.
My question. I don't let him talk and tell me what I'm saying.
Trash pickup will be handled by the management company.
How often?
Is, is often as is necessary, I, I don't think that we can provide a specific answer yet.
So you won't answer the schedule question?
I don't think that's something that he would know the answer to.
I think the developer would.
Maybe not at this point, though.
But why don't we ask him?
It's not.
You can, you've, but, okay.
He's saying he won't answer the question.
I don't think that's what he's saying, he's saying.
I'm not saying I will not answer the question, what I'm saying is that we don't have that information.
I, I think he's avoiding a very important question that's impacting our thought process.
Ben, I think I heard that we don't have legal counsel represented, for the record, I want to add that, we have no legal counsel in this meeting to address that.
Right, to get our, to address what we can.
So, so. So what, what I'm hearing is that the board has a question about trash pickup. The developer's attorney does not have that answer, the architect should have the answer about the size of the. Receptacles that are inside the enclosed area, and that's a question that we can ask. For coming back, but I. I would imagine that it's going to be addressed in the. I imagine that's gonna be addressed in the, in the HOA docs of how people are handling their trash and also in the. What is it, the ONM, the MNO? Yeah.
Well, can't he, can't the attorney just read to us then what it says?
I don't, there, let me find the commission that talks about it. It's.
Well, why don't we ask him? To read, read it to us, where does it say in the HOA agreement, anything that refers to trash pickup?
In what agreement?
I don't remember your name. Haverty, where are you reading from, or where are you trying to find it?
Well, I'm just looking at the, the, so the report that we got that. Where Bracken went through and made, put his comments on top of trashier's comments, most like. What they agree to, or what we agree to, or what, what are still open deliverables.
Can I? Just because it doesn't show up in this, doesn't mean that we can't ask questions about it and feel. Concerned that they, they're offering enough places for trash in the development.
Well, we can offer those concerns, but this has been approved already by Hack.
No, this is adding the dumpsters as a new plan, that wasn't on Exhibit C.
They, they were, they were, we just had to modify it because of extended, so we just move, I just moved.
Where is Exhibit C then? I need to find it and compare it.
Exhibit C?
Yeah.
The plans that are dated.
Where is the original plan?
I think Exhibit C, sorry, was from two, or the, the decision is based on the plans dated two twenty-eight, twenty. And so we, we, those are, those are what's approved, so we are looking for discrepancies. Between what the conditions were. And what is on these. And so we can't. I don't believe that we can say, like Hack was already determined that this.
There was no trash shown, you know, I mean, in fashion, so that we don't have an issue, it's just, what are we doing here?
I'm not seeing questions, I'm just saying we can't create new conditions.
We're, we're not, there weren't, there wasn't trash shown before. There is adequate trash, this is a huge development. So.
So how, so how much more trash do you?
There should be at least one per building, I wanna know the size, how, how the trash pick up, well. I, I understand how often they do it, I suppose it's up to them, and if it's. Not handled well, it's gonna be terrible in there, but, you know, are they, do you separate, are there separate bids, or is it a single stream? I don't know how that works for a commercial versus a residential, and you said you can do your single street.
Yeah, but Jim was pointing out this, well, it's mixed, it's actually mixed, it says residential above, residential.
I mean, it's, it's understanding how that's gonna be handled to make sure it's. Cause I think that and my other concern is relative to site sign of the mailboxes. That, because originally there was a mailroom in the. Now each building seems to have a mailbox, but are they, are, how big, how big are these structures?
I'm sorry, we're not able to, but what you think the van, which was, I go by US, is, is the freestanding unit with a tiny slot, so two condominiums. Would share van stand, which would have a package drop up on the bottom, so it's almost like a freestanding.
How big are they?
They are usually, the van would be selected, but approximately, I wanna say like three feet, invite you stand, six feet, oh. They have them then two, so two condominiums would share van of this.
So there'll be nine around the.
Yes, that's correct, within the building, close to the parking.
And how many slots are in there?
They have twenty slots, units, two bigger bids for a package. And they can provide that.
They're showing the little ends.
And then, I don't know if you know this question, this, but the mail area that was inside. The recreational facility is now.
I believe so, it's not anymore, it's not anymore.
So the, the mail is the M, right?
Yes.
Okay, so eleven and twelve share one, thirteen, fourteen, okay. So, now sixteen, your, yours is on the road. You have to go all the way to fifty to get your mail. They're not necessarily centered between the two buildings.
Just a comment, I think we, we are asking these questions appropriately. And I also think that the parking couches might have to get redone when we add in the. The parking spaces that are gonna be really prevent you from parking there overnight, or. Twenty-four hours a day anyway. Wouldn't be able to get the roll-offs out of there. And I think this is about ten.
Yeah, I'm suggesting they add three more. Ten, ten, I'm sorry, ten.
Ten spaces.
Okay, I was, I think they should add more, a few more.
Well, if they're roll-offs, are they roll-offs or are they dumpsters?
You won't be able to get a car, park a car if you have to pull the roll-off out.
Right, so my question is, is it a roll-off or a dumpster, roll-off, you need a truck to put it on to the back of the truck. A dumpster, they can physically go over into the dumpster and pull it out, two different animals.
Like this one, you'd never be able to get to, you would have to park here and walk and grab the stuff. Many of them, this one, you could probably do a roll-off, it really depends on where they're located, yeah.
Yeah, well, this one, they can back the.
Yeah, exactly.
Pull up to it.
That one works.
And I'm thinking, for instance, building fifteen, sixteen.
Most of them.
There's three spaces there.
Yeah.
That are, you're not gonna be able to park in.
Right. So just more clarity on how that's all gonna work.
And regarding parking, and I may be late to this because I wasn't part of. The entire review from the beginning, but just for instance, taking building fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen with. Three occupants per building, so, and then I just counted the amount of parking spaces for the occupants. So I'm counting maximum of ninety people, and there are. So, in just this one section, so half of fifteen, half of sixteen, all of seventeen, all of eighteen, that's ninety people. And then I counted all of the parking spots, and that's thirty-seven parking spots for ninety people. Has that already been approved? And we're not allowed to ask your questions.
The far February twenty eighth plan has been approved.
Okay.
Yeah. Which is unfortunate, because I do think that that is going to be an issue.
It, it definitely will be an issue, but if we have no loading power and we're not allowed to ask about it, then.
You can ask about it.
I think I wouldn't, yeah.
I think Hack is prone to making mistakes.
Yeah.
This is, this wouldn't be the first.
Okay, so. I'll, I will ask, who will I direct my parking question to? The council for Jamie Feely, or to landscaper, or to?
Let's start with. I, if I, I, I'm trying to figure out, though, that he's on broadcast, yes, or Ryan. Yeah, I think John, I think he said he was on vacation last week. I think you could ask Attorney Haverty and see if he has, I don't know that he'll have information about specific parking calculations.
All right, may I ask him?
Sure.
Mr. Haverty, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
This is Elisa Allen asking, so I was not on the board when, during the early stages of reviewing these plans. So, I'm just doing a rough estimate and trying to see what parking was based upon. And so if I were to take, I don't know if you want me to go over again, half of building fifteen, half of building sixteen, all of building seventeen, all of building eighteen. I would come up with roughly ninety people maximum, a little less. If each room had double occupancy, and then I have to be amount of parking spots for. Half of fifteen, half of sixteen, all of seventeen, all of eighteen, and there's thirty-seven parking spots. Does that estimate sound right to you?
I have not looked at this, I, I certainly will take you.
You haven't looked at parking?
At your word. Excuse me.
Have you looked at the parking based on?
I have not looked at the parking as it relates to the buildings that you are addressing, no.
So Mirko just answered, sorry, and she's talking to Don Bracken. Will, will you tell us again, Mirko?
Just a clarification, the calculation was done based on two spaces for all units. Except studios have only gone, some studios, not ever, some studios have gone on parking.
So two spaces per unit.
Whether, no, excuse me, no matter how many bedrooms it has, only two spaces.
Per unit.
So that is about half of what would be necessary if thirty people were in each building and everybody had their own car.
Well, and I think that that's probably more people, yeah, but I think every, I think one bedrooms will certainly have two drivers.
Yeah.
That's a given. I would say multiple bedroom units could potentially have more than two drivers. Yeah, three.
Three or four.
Studios could even have two vehicles, so, and the fact that you can't park on the street because there are, the roads aren't wide enough. It makes me concerned that there will be a lot of illegal parking, and then issues with safety vehicles getting around, just because.
So, with that math in mind. I'll go back to the developer's attorney. So. There's basically. Less than half of the amount of parking. Available, based on what the potential occupancy could be. And that doesn't make sense to me, so how did your client arrive at this? Amount of parking. Based on the occupancy?
So, parking was an issue during both the Housing Appeals Committee process and during the process with MEPA. MEPA actually encouraged a reduction in the amount of parking that was shown on the plans that my client submitted. A small reduction was achieved, additional spaces were land banked. The Housing Appeals Committee reviewed the plans as submitted. And approved those plans showing the number of parking spaces with the waiver requested, and, and that's what has been approved. And there's, there's really no going back from that, that is the, the parking that has been approved for this project and what will be provided moving forward.
Attorney Haverty, it's the two ninety-nine is the total parking spaces, and then it's. And does that, I'm sorry, just going back to the first discussion we had about this.
So that was my question, just looking at my notes, the two ninety-nine includes the ten by the community center. And the twenty accessible six van, correct? Those aren't in addition, okay, so two ninety-nine is the total number of parking spaces on the.
So that's one per bedroom.
Are the ten, are the ten at the community building, are those timed, planned to be time limited, or are those? Visitor spaces, or how, how's that gonna, how, how are those ten, are they different from the other ones?
There has been a determination made about that, that, that is the sort of level of detail that will be. Left to the, the property manager, because it's ultimately going to be their responsibility to manage this property to make sure. That all of the resources are properly allocated. That includes, as, as we were just discussing earlier, the trash pickup. That includes, you know, the parking around the community building, they're gonna wanna make sure that everything is operating smoothly. That is what they're, you know, paid to do, and that's what their job is. So that's sort of a level of detail that gets ironed out prior to occupancy. It, it's not really something that gets addressed at this point in the process.
Can I ask a question? Yeah, are you guys anticipating designating spaces for particular units? Or selling, you know, so that they're deeded with the units as they're sold?
I, I think that there will be, I know, I do not believe that there's going to be a se- a separate price for the sale of units. The sale of parking spaces per unit, I think that'll be included with the unit, but I think that each unit will have at least one space, yes.
And they'll be designated as their.
I don't necessarily know that they will be designated, it could just be that a parking pass is issued and they can park in any space that is available. Again, that's a level of detail that'll be worked out by the property management company.
I heard this question.
I, I think, yeah, and I just think the hard part is, those are the things that make a successful development, and I, it's just hard to understand. Cause we, we can't, we're not seeming to get any responses to this, it's just, I, I wish we had more concrete information about how some of this stuff would work.
I have a follow-up too, of the two hundred and ninety-nine parking spaces, how many of those are handicap only?
Twenty. Twenty, twenty and six are van.
So it's minus twenty-six, so that's two fifty-seven. No, sorry, I did that from the wrong, two seventy-three. Seventy-three spaces.
Twenty handicap?
No, twenty-two seventy-nine.
Minus six, sorry.
Two eighty-three minus twenty.
Oh, no, twenty accessible spaces and six of those are vans.
Oh, got it, got it, it's a total. Total of twenty.
Yeah.
So two seventy-nine.
And then it might be two sixty-nine if the ten in front of the community building are only for.
Right, so it's less.
Although, although the mail has moved out now, so that's a good thing, because then those parking spaces aren't, you don't need to be, you know, if the mail was all centralized. Then it made more sense for those parking spaces to be, you know, twenty minutes or whatever, because people would need to get in and out of their mail, and the fact that the mail's moved out now.
But the mail isn't necessarily located, because. At the front, it's not like each building has a front door.
No, I know, I know, but I guess what I'm saying is.
Still gonna be a lot of hassle to like go get your mail, you're gonna, you're gonna have to. For a package, it's, it's not like it's when you walk in the door, you get your mail, you, if you live and you're using this entrance. You gotta come around and use that mailbox.
I don't think it's that big, I mean, I live in Noshop and our mail is on the other side of the loop from me at the clubhouse, like, it's not that big. I don't, I don't, it's not that big of a deal, the thing that will be a big deal is. You know, people are gonna wanna, you know, come run for war, drive, stop and get their mail, and so it's gonna be a little bit of a cluster, but. They'll figure, they'll have to figure that out, I mean, there's not, there's not gonna be a perfect, there's not gonna be a solution for that, I think, I don't know.
Madam Chair, can I comment here? This is, we need the expertise of our engineer to advise us on this, we're. We're six people trying to figure out parking required, and I know you're advocating strongly for whatever they're asking for, but we need to know what.
No, I'm not advocating strongly for whatever they're asking for.
How can we have these review meetings without, and without attorney, without an engineer?
Well, they said that they couldn't make it.
But we only have a limited amount of time, we're not, these, the review's not been extended.
So the point of this was to, so we can come up with whatever these questions are. But what I'm, what, what, I'm, I'm not advocating for what the, the wishlist of the developer. What I'm recommending and reminding us is, is that the plan has already been approved by Hack. We are constrained to not add new conditions, so we can talk about the parking, and do I, I think there should be more parking. I'm not in, I don't love this plan, but this is what has been approved, so if we can find deficiencies in it, then we can bring that up. But we can't. but this is what has been approved, so if we can find deficiencies in it, then we can bring that up, but we can't, we, we can't say, developer, this is not enough parking, it doesn't meet our parking calculations and this is a problem. We can note it in our decision and then going forward, but we can't tell them they have to remove, uh, to make a building smaller or take up green space and add more parking. Am I correct? I may be wrong.
No, no, these are basic questions.
With all due respect, Madam Chair, we are not making any demands. All we've done so far are ask questions. And we don't have Don Bracken and we don't have our engineer who reviews this, nor do we have any representation, so frankly.
John, John Chesia said that this was not part of his review, correct? The landscape plan is not part of his review. Number one. Number two, what I think it is true that he said that we should review while he's not here and while he's doing the work on the last meeting's questions. We could meet on these because those are out of his purview. That's what he said.
But I just wanted to continue what I was saying before I was interrupted. We are not making any demands on, or saying any statements, you need more of this, you have to have that. We are just asking questions, which since we can't vote on anything and since we don't have anyone to answer our questions, they're merely questions, we're not making demands, we know that this is already been approved, but what is the duty of our board and what is the purpose of this meeting then? I don't feel like we're making demands, we're just asking questions, but what, what is the point then for them to come back to us with answers or how does this?
We can ask questions, I can ask for answers to those specific things, like the, the mail and the trash and and parking, and parking. The point of the meeting was to go through, as you guys requested, to go through these plans and look for any deficiencies, so that's.
Yeah, so we're doing that.
Yeah, and then we can have a list, sorry, of information I need, Michael.
Yeah, I think the, I didn't sit on this application, but I've sat on several, forty days. And the first day, maybe two days, two meetings, three hours of meeting. There's a couple hundred people in the, in the room and the, everyone is told what's gonna happen and that if, if the board doesn't approve something that the state feels is adequate, then it's gonna go to the HAC and let them decide, and if they decide in favor of the applicant, then the applicant is going to get what he originally applied for, which is usually more than they really want. And in this case, that's exactly what happened. We lost all our leverage because HAC decided that we didn't give enough. So what we're doing today is trying to salvage what was approved and make it, like Lisa said, make it a better development. Make sure everyone has access to the garbage bin. When they open it up, it's not full. It's, it's basic stuff. That there's enough parking for everyone, so they don't start parking on the side of the road. That's the best you're gonna get.
But by us asking, giving these points about, does not require them to do any of it, is that true?
That's, well, we could leave that up.
In our fingers.
But I feel like, I mean, you're giving legal advice on this, on how this should run and I, I don't, you know, I know you have a lot of.
I'm not giving legal advice.
I don't think that's legal, that's how the process works.
I, I don't know about that. This was remanded. This is different than a normal situation, so what? What, what do you think a remand is?
Let's ask Leslie if that's all right with you.
It's not remanded.
Correct. And, and right now, all you are supposed to be doing is the technical review. I mean, you're getting a little or a lot off base with the, you know, the questions about the management of the trash and the management of the parking, like, those are important issues, but I think that's really outside of the scope of what you're here to do today. I mean, the, you know, Condition ninety-seven as amended, which gets to your trash question, talks about, you know, they have to submit plans done by a registered architect into the satisfaction, I'm paraphrasing here, of, you know, the building commissioner or whatever official has to review them and they have to show, you know, the location of the mailboxes, the location of the dumpsters, and I think, you know, those have been provided, and if you have comments on those, you should provide them to the applicant for them to consider. But, you know, their obligation to change things, is that really there?
I have a question though, Leslie, because the dumpsters or mailboxes were not shown on the previous plan at all, so why wouldn't we have the ability to request more dumpsters and have them be different, because they don't show up on the February twenty eighth plan? There's no, no, nothing that should be.
I think you can definitely comment on that, and if in the end you wanna put that in a list of deficiencies, we review the plans that were modified, excuse me, that were required in modified Condition ninety-seven. And we found the number of dumpsters to, you know, be deficient, and you can certainly put that in the letter.
Let's put that in the list.
But I do think that
Totally deficient.
That asking, I think asking for specific questions about, or specific responses to your questions about scheduling and how the recyclables are gonna be separated from the rest of the garbage and all that sort of thing is really a management issue for later. I can tell you, I'm fairly certain that the planning board during their review of the Richmond Meadows Two project, which in terms of scale, I think is comparable to this, they reviewed the plans for dumpster locations, but I do not think that they got into specifics of, you know, how many times a week they're going to be emptied or how many bins are going to be in there. I mean, if it's, it's not well kept, people aren't going to want to go there, and you sort of have to trust the main company to deal with that. And that's also way beyond the scope of our review.
Madam Chair, Ryan Maxwell just joined us as a senior Bracken engineer.
And just back to, I think someone asked the question earlier about whether you can or can't include additional conditions. Page forty-two of the HAC decision, item number four specifically says, the board shall not include new, comma, additional conditions, so that's very clear.
So I think that's progress then, so ninety, Condition ninety-seven.
Well, I, I think it's important because if four years from now or three years from now is a complaint about this, we've got, we can document, we discussed it in a meeting.
No, but this is.
After the HAC had already sent it back and remanded it back to the town.
Well, it's not, it's not remanded.
If it was remanded, then we would have the ability to change it and make some decisions. That would have been great if it was commanded and we, they said, this isn't meeting the need for affordable housing on Nantucket, come up with something better. That would have been amazing. They didn't do that. They said, this isn't meeting what you said, your decision does not meet the need. We think the need outweighs your concerns and we're approving this. We can't make new conditions, but we have the review to look at things exactly like this. So again, the goal for us is to note the issue of the final plan and then issue a decision either that is the HAC decision with the CBA decision, the conditions as amended conforms with the final plans or conform but for noted issues or doesn't conform. And then that, we give to the building department and then the building commissioner reviews what we say and either issues a permit or he doesn't. So I think what we will end up doing is, I, I, I hope, is come up with a list of things but for, you know, it conforms but for these noted issues. One of them being like the trash that these are deficient, we think, that's what we decide, and we include that in a letter to the building commissioner and then he sees that and he looks and the developer and they see that when they're going to your building permit, and I, I think as Michael said, really just that, unfortunately, the situation that we are in, and it would behoove us, I think, to, you know, try to to try to do this in a way that we are, that the developer will listen to us and not say, this is what's approved and we're not doing, we don't care, we're not making any changes.
I think that's a possibility. I don't anticipate that happening, but I, I, I'm gonna just take a guess that between the date the permits issued and the time that this project is one hundred percent complete, that the developers will be back to the sounding board of appeals no less than twenty times.
For changes.
Yeah.
And I just wanna make sure too, I was thinking about this yesterday. You know, like, so when, I wasn't, I didn't sit on, on the beach plum, you know, but we did have an issue come back to us on that one where changes were made to the plan. The developer didn't come to us for, I don't remember exactly the reason, but, you know, garage is removed or included and whatever. And so that, I don't know when that happened or how that wasn't caught or when it was caught or anything like that. I'm just saying that that is one of the things that like, that's our, that's something that we can catch, right? If there's like, all of a sudden there's like an extra building or a thing that it doesn't, this does not jive with what HAC approved that way. That's the decision.
Can we just reiterate what our ninety-day expiration date is? I'm not really clear on, is it June twenty-eighth?
Yes, that's with the two, I think it was the two eighty, or is that extension?
Okay, so that was our extension, June twenty-eighth, and so between, and correct me if I'm wrong, between now and June twenty-eighth, this board can meet and discuss and put down on paper our concerns, and then it doesn't get voted on, it doesn't affect their, their proceeding with the building permit, and our list of concerns just goes to the developer and we just cross our fingers and hope they do what we're concerned about. Okay, just wanted to be clear on that.
Yeah.
And then after the twenty-eighth, we no longer have, there's no need to have any more further discussions about this until they come back. Okay, all right, I just procedurally just didn't really clearly understand how that goes.
So like, so just, whatever, I don't know if this helps or not, but like, so going through yesterday, like, I just went through the conditions and like, okay, what's the condition, what page is that, what are the things, so that when we're having these conversations, I can look and be like, okay, gutters, yep, that's twenty-three, page forty-two, did gutters get added? Okay, check it off, come on, that's done.
Correct.
But that exercise of like, what are the things, the deliverables, when are they being delivered? Is it pre-construction, is it pre-permit, is it during the review? If it's during the review, then we need to have it now, like.
But there's no obligation on their part to deliver in a certain amount of time or to act on any of our concerns?
There's a, there's a commitment for them, like, I have a question, like Attorney Haverty, I have a question on Condition ninety-three. Like, it says the financial documents, including cost certification submissions, are due. And that's on page fifty-five of our packet, and my question is, when do you submit those? Cause it's not quite clear in the Haverty's dictionary.
Cost certification occurs after final development has been completed and the last unit has been sold, because you can't do it sooner than that.
Right.
Cause you'd be incomplete. There is a requirement a, as part of the final approval process that the applicant provide a surety to the subsidizing agency to make sure that that cost certification process occurs, and that it occurs in a timely manner. So that gets done, the board is entitled to notification of all the submittals for that cost certification process.
So, okay, perfect, answered, thank you. So that, so that kind of exercise, right? So going through and then, like, okay, that question's answered, then we can move on.
Well, I, can I question about, and one of the questions that was brought up last week, which is more of a global question, was the schedule of how these buildings are gonna be built, and when units get sold off in a building, you know, just, just how that process is gonna work, because I do think that that's sort of a safety issue with people living in this development while it's being worked on, and Condition eighty-eight, it says for every three market rate units for which a CFO is issued, there shall be at least one affordable unit for which a CFO of occupancy is issued. So who's going to monitor, who monitors that and makes sure that that takes place? And then how does that, you know, are they gonna concentrate on getting like buildings one, two, seventeen, eighteen done, so that, you know, Howard, I, I wanna understand, I think it's legitimate question, is how the phasing of this project's gonna take place and how they proceeds selling off units and still continuing construction.
So I, I have that under ninety-seven K on page sixty, construction schedule to be submitted with the final construction plans.
Right, so we are looking at final construction plans still.
Yeah, so, yeah, so I have that as an open item.
Yeah. So can somebody just answer when, when we're gonna get that information?
Ryan, I don't know if you're prepared to respond to that. I, I will say that there, we can certainly submit an estimated construction schedule, but of course there needs to be flexibility. Cause that's something, you know, that circumstances can impact. You know, a development, you know, it's wonderful to, to plan it out and say that you're gonna build this building and then that building and then that building and it'll be occupied immediately and you'll move right on. But of course, reality is somewhat different and, and things happen. So while we will need flexibility, you, you should have that construction schedule, and I know, I see that Ryan has unmuted himself, so I'll let him speak.
Okay, Ryan?
Yep, we had submitted a erosion control construction schedule.
Yeah.
How the site can be. It should be in the stormwater report.
So not a drawing.
There, there should be a couple plans with it. It's how we handle stormwater while the, the site's being built.
The SWP thing?
Can somebody point me to a packet, the page in our packet?
Let me see.
Well, I think we went over, didn't we go over this already?
No. Not a schedule.
No, 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 that, we, no, you're right.
It was one phase, but that doesn't mean that.
That's not a construction schedule.
Yeah, and I'm not, you know, to Mr. Haverty's question, I'm not saying, asking for when each building's gonna be complete. I wanna know how they're gonna secure the sites and everything else as people start to move in, cause I'm assuming that they're not gonna wait for the whole thing to be done for people to move in, they're gonna do it by building, so I.
I, I would presume that as well.
Yeah, so I need to, I think that it's important for us to understand how that process is gonna go.
Is this what you're referring to, Lisa?
Yep.
I, I don't know what page you said.
Well, this is, this was from, I guess, the first meeting, these are all on the website. I created a packet specifically for this.
I, well, what I'm looking for is maybe nothing, not maybe something more written, like, our idea is to start buildings one, two, seventeen, eighteen first, have those completed hopefully four months, move on to this. When we move, you know, the way we're gonna secure those buildings or whatever they're gonna do, I'm making all this stuff up, but.
No, but that's what they did at safety path, right? They like changed the exit and made it scalable with safety.
Or driving through construction sites. I mean, that's what I wanna understand, this is a big project.
Yeah, I think Billy had something to add.
So yes, Bracken had submitted the updated stormwater report based on last week's meeting, which was sent to John Chessia. I have copies for everyone, but John Chessia has not reviewed and provided his comments.
But I'm looking for just a written schedule of how we're gonna develop these buildings, independent of the stormwater report, independent of the erosion control.
In a phasing format.
Yeah, yeah, I understand, there's only one phase, you're building all the buildings at once, but as you said, Mr. Haverty, they're not gonna wait till they're all done and just sell them.
We, we can submit, we can submit something that, that responds to that.
Okay, okay, great, thank you.
All right, so that's, Madam Chair, if I can respond to Lisa's question about Condition eighty-eight, about who's gonna monitor the market rate units and the affordable units and the CNI's, or excuse me, CEOs. That's done in combination with the building commissioner and your CBA staff person. So like, for instance, at Richmond, we have a color-coded chart of all of the market rates, all of the affordables, and we track, you know, which CEOs are granted ones, so that we keep on track, because this is a similar project in terms of.
Yeah, and we did that with St. Joe's and Eleanor, remember Eleanor provided us when she was admin, she provided us in every.
It's easier there though, because I'm presuming there's. It's easier there though, because I'm presuming there's affordable units in every building.
Or actually, maybe it was Beach Plum. It was in St. Joe's, in St. Joe's, it was all affordable.
Well, no, but there were the habitat houses that we wanted to make sure.
But we're familiar with that color-coded.
So you'll do it by built, by unit though, by building?
Yeah.
It's such a difference, it's different.
I have, I have a question. Are these units being pre-sold before they're even built?
That would certainly be the goal, if, if we could, yes.
Are they being marketed right now?
I think that there is some soft marketing going on, but they're not being actively marketed yet. But I think once construction commences, that they will be actively marketed. And then, of course, you know, that, that then, you know, would also be the initiation of the lottery process for the affordable units, um, you know, because that has to occur before you start selling units as well, so that will be during construction.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
Are we, um, through with the landscaping comments?
Um, I don't think so. I, I could be geared off a little bit, but did you, Jim, did you have any comments on the trees?
No, just, uh, there's reference to, uh, anything over eight inches caliber.
That's correct.
And is, is there any?
Those are diagrams, like, what's being interpreted?
Yeah, they are. If you, if you see the page number 112. The old trees, uh, these trees to age, uh, over eight inches caliber. This is the middle island where the expense, you see, I know it may be hard on a small copy, but you can see the green circle, which would have a protected zone. There's a typical detail to protect the trees. And then, uh, in addition, Bracken surveyed everything on, you can see from the north property line, bigger trees, they are, they are, uh, surveyed. However, we will not be protecting, preserving them individually. Behold, any or so feet as an undisturbed zone will be fenced. So no, no, no commotion, nothing will be happening if it's on.
So there's a fence around that entire area. It was just hard to see it on some of the plans. So where I've highlighted it, it goes all the way around.
That's all preserved, that's correct.
That's all preserved.
And the, and these are existing trees or are those planned?
Those are existing trees, which are marked, so they're planned by Bracken as well.
It is still about fencing up now, Mary?
Uh, and the area is, the island is, I do not believe, because the property is not fully, uh, so I don't think so, they're very, very expensive.
But that'll be just. I think we can, that is something that was said that we can, that should be transparted construction.
And that's correct.
I think, I think yes. Is there a dog designated area in this complex?
There, there is not necessarily dog run, but there's a big, the middle island is supposed to be open green space for everyone.
Okay.
So, yeah. And plus, there is another green space between the units of 17 and 18. That's most, at some point, considered could be as a, you know, the dog runoff, but it's not clearly just a dog eye for everyone right now. Plus, the dog park is down the street, so.
And the erosion control is out within your purview?
That's been broken.
So the, Lisa, do you think there should be more, more male receptacles or do you?
I just wanted to see an image of what this looks like.
We'll provide, I, I did not include, I didn't realize.
I mean, I don't know.
Is it like the ones at Beach Plum?
Uh, I saw the state check out.
Same.
Same station?
Yeah, the same in style. Yeah, yeah, it's a US certified stand.
Did it take big boxes?
The stand and I, I can even find it. That's what we submission, to find it on, on a phone right now, we have it in a file. It's just a freestanding stand, which two bigger dropouts, uh, packaging, but it's not, I don't know if you think like something.
Well, I just get, I, I just get concerned about, um, with, you know, I can't remember how many veterans in each of these, 16. Maybe there's nine units, eight units per building, though. There could be tons of those.
The Christmas time, right?
Yeah. Security packages and things like that. It seems like they're going to be, I mean, I see them on the public road with this boxes stacked by mailbox. It's ridiculous, so. And I just don't think that that's a, I, I think, you know, the, the community building is big. I don't really understand why they don't put a mailroom in there where I, although Susan brings up the good issue with the parking, but a place where packages can be received, so you don't have them stacked up all over the place.
And they might end up doing that.
Well, I mean, but we're reviewing the clubhouse, so.
No, no, really, when we get there, but I'm, no, I'm saying like, as, I think practically, like, they'll have to.
Right, so I'm just thinking that maybe we should make that as part of the clubhouse design, because I do think it makes things will get stolen. I'm just questioning about that.
And Madam Chair, with, with other projects where boards have requested this type of thing, I know that there's, you know, a lot of input from the postal service, so while you all may want to have them, may not be granted by them, so just be aware of that. There's not totally.
Well, I'm thinking of FedEx and, and UPS, not the postal service. Right? I mean, are they under the same, no, they're private entities. I mean, yeah, I'm sorry.
I just want to, if I can, on the floor?
Yes, please.
We designated time for the clubhouse today?
Yes.
Okay.
Let's, yeah.
Whenever you're ready, I'm ready.
Okay, so no, any other, um, comments or questions on the landscape plan at this time?
And what we're going to do is to see.
Well, we're, I think, let's do the, let's have the clubhouse. Okay, first, and then move on to that. Okay. All right, so the clubhouse, Michael, did you, you have?
I, I, I was not sitting on this when I was with you, but I, I think that, you know, with, with the, the number of people that are going to be living here, bigger is probably better. And I just want to, uh, see if we can come to an agreement with the developer on what's going to be happening in that building. For instance, is there going to be weddings? And if there are, if it's not allowed?
So, yeah, well, essentially, you hear that, but, yeah, go ahead. So condition 15, and, and this was one of my questions to just have confirmation. Condition 15C says no commercial kitchen or catering. And then condition D, the exclusive use for residents and guests, no outside rentals. So I just wanted to confirm, confirm with Attorney Haverty that, 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 those are.
But you bring up a question about if, if a resident is having a wedding for their daughter and they want to do it there, they can invite their guests, which could, which could be 200 people.
Well, if that's going to happen, I think we should limit the size of the wedding wedding and that there be no outside party functions there. That rent the space for.
No caterers.
Yeah.
No.
Because they can bring in food cooked.
Yeah, right. So I just wanted to confirm, there's, with Attorney Haverty, you, there's no commercial kitchen. Does it say catering?
No commercial kitchen catering facilities.
Right.
For exclusive use of residents and guests, no outside rentals.
Right.
But I think, I think Michael brings up a good point, that it should be no catering allowed.
Well, I, I think that if a resident should have, have rights to use that space, it's just a question of, at what point do, does the capacity become too much?
Well, wouldn't it only have 10 parking spaces?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think that the capacity be limited by.
On the side of the hood.
Are these rules or guidelines going to be in the condo docs?
Well, but, well, this, we would like to see those, but we don't have to see them, right? They don't have to submit them.
Well, this, this, this supersedes, the condo docs will have to conform with this decision. So, I, so.
I, I, I don't think that, unfortunately, I think that the hack decision doesn't go into the way things can be used and human nature in terms of.
We didn't include, which I think is strange, that we didn't include no weddings. I mean, I thought.
We definitely talked about the building was only 1100 square feet.
Right, right, it was a smaller building, right, 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 right.
So I think that that's a, a really good point. And then given that.
Where does alcohol play into that? Like bringing alcohol into the space? I mean, I know that's.
I think we're adding conditions.
Yeah, I think they'd have to get, they'd have to get, they'd have to, I mean, it's private, I don't know, that's. We can.
How is it a non-shop? Just curious.
We don't even use the clubhouse.
That's much smaller. Right, isn't it tiny?
Right, no, no, non-shop has, our, non-shops, our clubhouse is, um.
Some reason it's working.
No, no, but when, when we were doing this application, I went and looked at all the clubhouses or on, not, naturally, it is bigger, but they all use a lot of it because it's. Anyway, uh, we don't really use it for that, but I think that.
I think, I, I think we can be more, we're not adding a condition, we can be more
Precisade?
precise on the condition. Maybe.
Well, like, this is going to go back to hack anyway.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, they might shoot it down, but we might as well say there's just not adequate parking to have any large gatherings in this building.
Outside, yeah, like a wedding, where you're bringing in a lot of people from outside.
You know, if, if it was a homeowners association meeting and they set up 80, 80 chairs, that's, that's fine, everyone can walk.
Right.
I don't know if they're going to agree to that, but, you know, if we can change that and we can change.
Right. Well, again, it's.
Well, I think some exercises we can, they were never specified.
I'm just curious, I guess, what state law is, if we had counsel on this, they might be able to guide us on what state law is as far as alcohol at the clubhouse inside and out. And we maybe should ask for that to be reiterated in, in the.
Well, I don't, I mean, I think you'd have to thought, you'd have to follow whatever the state law is anyway, just the same way.
That's why I just want to know what they, what state law is for, for this type of setting and living arrangement. We don't know.
I don't know.
No, we don't know. And if we had, I, I guess we should ask and know.
Well, I I think that's outside of our purview. I just, I don't think that we, I don't think that's, that's already controlled by another.
But, but suggesting that they, that large gatherings of outside people are not allowed.
Yeah, so.
Within our purview.
Yeah, so it says now, no commercial kitchen or catering facilities. And again, Attorney Haverty, I was just asking you for 15 C and D, the no commercial kitchen catering facilities, it's for the exclusive use of residents and guests, no outside rentals, like that's what you guys are planning.
Correct. We, we did not object to those conditions and they, they remain in place. Um, a lot of the other stuff that's being talked about, I, I can certainly have a conversation with my clients, get a sense as to what their thinking is on these questions, um, and, and to the extent that it needs to be addressed, um, you know, we can certainly address them in condominium documents, you know, that will be submitted and reviewed prior to certificates of occupancy being granted. Um, but the, the, the discussion about, you know, clarifying previously issued conditions, I, I don't think that that's what this would be. You would be looking to expand upon um, conditions that have been previously issued. And I, I don't think that that would be appropriate. That being said, if my clients agree to it and we're willing to put that into the condo documents, then, you know, you should be fine with that.
Um, just through you, Madam Chair, I think for me, the, the way that this is written, it sort of assumes that you might have a family over to your house and the you, you're, you and your three kids and your friend and their few kids are going to go over and use the pool. That is a guest. That's not the same thing as having a function. And I think that that can be clarified.
Well.
And within the scope of what we can do. There should be able to, because that's, 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 the, the word guest is arbitrary.
Right, so most, so the HOA docs, right, well, I would imagine like most communities like this will limit like residents and guests to go use things. It's, it's a privilege of I get what you're saying, yeah.
I mean, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, again, I, I can have this conversation with my clients. Um, I, I do think that in terms of community-wide gatherings, that's something that, you know, is going to be a feature for this, but it's going to be for the residents of the community, not for outside people. And, you know, this is going to be a condominium association. It's going to have, you know, quite a number of residents there, and I'm sure that they're going to be sensitive to any, you know, one particular resident having a large event at the community building, because that's going to prevent, you know, everybody else from using it. Um, so I, I, you know, this is something I can have a conversation with my clients about, um, but I, I think that we can come to a resolution on this.
Okay. Yeah, it would be good to get or hear their thoughts about what their vision for those uses.
Sure.
And Madam Chair, if I can just offer a suggestion, I think, you know, you could note in your letter to the building commissioner regarding your plan review, that you, you know, reviewed the parking, you reviewed the clubhouse in accordance with the HAC decision, your comp permit and the exhibit C, and that you note concerns about future uses at the property, such as weddings or whatever, and how that may impact the parking that's provided. So that way you're on record, you said it, it's in the file. But you know, again, like, you can't really control that.
As, as actually in this particular plan, showing a larger clubhouse?
Yeah, but they didn't strike, they didn't strike the verb is saying that it should be only 1100 square feet, but we're apparently have to abide by the plan.
Yeah, it says.
But this work footage has changed on plan slightly. Because of how they're building the building.
Yeah, so how does that, how, so I, I had a question about that. How does that work with hack? Because they, it's about the insulation or something that was increasing the, the 3912 to 3975. How, is, so do they have to resubmit to hack to get approval for that to minimize change? Or do we approve that to minimize change? Or?
Attorney Haverty can correct me if I'm wrong, because he's more familiar with this process, but it's my understanding that their engineer said at the last meeting that the foundation is the same as what was shown on the plan the HAC approved and that the construction, not that, which is causing the, I think it's 75 square feet or something, changing changing ground cover.
Yeah.
Um, it's also my understanding that you can approve that change. It does not require them to go back to hack.
Probably also, yeah, I mean.
So it's probably the thickness of the shingles or.
No, it's not. It's, it's because they're doing panelized constructions, so the foundation wall overhangs, so the foundation is larger. The foundation, I believe, I'm.
No, I think he said, well, I, I would. I think he said it was the same.
There's a drawing in here that shows the way it works. Yeah, so the foundation is wider. Depends where you take here. The wall itself is not, but it bows out, and so we're at grade. The foundation is larger, because this is grade. That's the foundation wall below. This is getting wider.
What numbers then?
Uh, A1, A5. So why they couldn't just pull this in and have the same ground cover?
Right. Right, so that's, this is the issue.
Yeah, so the foundation is bigger. The wall of the foundation is not, but the point at grade, the foundation is larger.
Uh, this is Kelsey Odom with Workshop APD, the architect. Correct, we just changed the shape of the foundation wall because of, we added the SIPs panels, which is a thicker wall construction to provide extra insulation.
I did have one comment on that, just FYI, it looks like to me that your drawings are backwards, that the west is east and east is west on the most recent sort of drawings I got. East is. East is. West is. On page A two oh one, west was where the big barn doors are. Which is the end of the gym. But I thought that that was actually east because north is. Got myself confused. South is, uh, the elevation that has the stairs, correct? Next year's stairs by the maintenance shed is south. Yep, so then north, so then if you go around, so the north, south, east would be the right side where the lounge is. And it's marked as west, an elevation one two point oh one.
Yep, you're right.
And east is marked as, it should be west.
Apologies for the confusion on that, this is Iran Jabaral with Workshop APD.
And then the building still doesn't show gutters and downstairs, this one?
And the revised drawings are showing on the screen, uh, we're showing. The added gutters and the details as well as the elevations and the downstairs.
Oh, you know what, I might, those might have been. Eleven, I thought these were the ones I just picked up last week. Three seventeen, these are on my desk here today.
This says, this one says twelve oh two twenty-two.
Yeah, I don't know, I thought I picked these up when I came last week. That's why I didn't see them on, on what I picked up last week.
And they are shown on the elevator.
Yeah, so maybe there's a newer set that I didn't get. Little mind show.
The, this, this is issued for roof changes five oh four, five twenty-three, three seventeen twenty-three.
Yeah, that's what I have. I just wanted to make sure that we are getting the gutter. Oh, yeah, no, I'm sorry, there, here they are, they're just in a different. Madam Chair, through you step, does HTC staff or through this, through this? Would it be beneficial for them?
He was asking Leslie, so let Leslie answer.
I don't believe there's any role for the HTC or their staff, you all act as the HTC. HTC. Approved plans.
No, 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 I, I.
HTC, yeah, HTC.
But there is something in here that says about going to the, going to the local. Land review for HTC.
But HTC gave us input. During the process, but I don't think they've looked at these plans, they just gave us. Input about. Back in the meeting.
Back at the last review.
Yeah, like.
Before it happened.
Yeah.
Before we had, uh, eighteen tall, big buildings.
Well, do they?
We, we only had a section of big buildings in the back and the whole front was.
Yeah, yeah.
Designed as single-family houses.
Did the design on those, um.
Big buildings change.
Design on the big buildings change events.
Yes.
So that significantly.
Well, the architect changed, so I assume that the design of the building.
Yeah, any future proposed changes to exterior cultural, architectural features, subject to jurisdiction of the.
Yeah.
And they can't. They can't, the HOA and the condo trust can't modify conditions this.
Got it.
So, so there are elevations shown in those exhibit three plans.
So those are gonna be approved by hack.
Yeah, different.
Okay, so I, I do, I mean, we're not sending them to the HTC that I definitely.
Actually, maybe you can have their attorney confirm that, because I thought this was one single step, but maybe it's not.
So. Attorney Haverty, can you confirm, what do you want me to confirm, that they, that exhibit three? Included elevations.
Can you repeat that, please?
So did the exhibit three plan that was approved by hack, does that include elevations?
Uh, let, let me defer to our architect on that.
Oh, yeah, sure, sorry.
Iron, can you answer that, please?
Yes, it did include elevations.
And what were those dated, are those the? Just so we can make sure that we're looking at the right thing, are those the, um, the, are those the two twenty-eight twenty?
Yeah, then.
Plans?
I don't have those, because you gave us exhibit three and it's all bracketed plans. Those are dated later, I have those too, but they're dated later.
Exhibit, was it?
Exhibit three was the, is the plan that the hack decision references.
Yep, okay.
And that was, I have that one as dated. Two twenty-eight twenty.
Yeah, and I think it's the bracket layout plan.
Revised through February twenty, twenty twenty?
Yes. Yeah, from a. Has general. Hacked revised plans from two twenty-eight twenty, from the original two fifteen eighteen, and I have. That's the exhibit three, the decision is based on those plans.
Right, uh, but. Exhibit four is the architectural.
Right, were those, but did those go to hack, because this is. We were told that exhibit three went to hack, did exhibit four go to them?
Yes, yeah, the, these are all marked exhibits from the Housing Appeals Committee hearing process. Well, I have a date of March, it looks like twenty-third, twenty twenty.
March twenty-third.
Workshop APD.
I don't. All right, hold on. So those are exhibit four are ele, are the elevations, and those are three, what did you say, two twenty-three, twenty twenty?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
So. I don't know that. Yeah, I don't think the hack decision, does it reference exhibit four?
No.
I don't think it does.
And what is the date of the hack decision? Yeah, yeah, so these, every plan that I have for those architectural is post twenty, post that date. Other than site plant.
Just while we're discussing, is, um, is there a reason why we only have first floor?
Yeah, to go back to the other plan. Exactly, so, I did do that, that's why I think mine are separated.
Yeah. I think that's what happened.
Yeah. Basement looks like a bowling alley.
It's like, are you talking about the?
Well, I just, I was just talking about all of the buildings.
Those are from the, isn't that from the, um.
Either the original or the second meeting. They're post the hack decision by date.
Yes, those are the ones I have given out.
Yeah.
And what are the ones we don't have?
We don't, I don't think anything, the hack decision doesn't recruit it. So I don't think. They might have looked at the old drawings from our previous.
So if you look at page five of the Housing Appeals Committee decision. It specifically references the architectural plans, last paragraph. Each of the residential buildings is three stories, though they have lower level units and terraces below the surrounding ground level. Which minimizes the height of the buildings and creates the appearance of two-story buildings. Exhibit thirty-six, paragraph thirty-seven, exhibit four, pages twenty-two, twenty-four and twenty-five. The Housing Appeals Committee absolutely reviewed the architectural plans and its decision is based upon them.
Can we get a copy of? Yeah, so we. Yeah, I just, as a, I, I'd like, I think we should see a copy of whatever that was that they approved.
Can the architect answer whether these plans differ from those that we have here? Through you, manager. The SS dash zero zero one.
Aaron, can you respond to that, please?
We call building type A one.
Could you please repeat the question?
There, there, I have an SCN building type A one plan that I'm referring to, it's, uh, the number S dash zero zero zero. March seventeenth of this year.
March seventeenth of this year?
Yeah.
Do you have the one of, the above, under religions?
Oh, you're asking if those are different from the ones.
Yeah, I'm just asking.
Yeah.
They, those, those are the more detailed final plans, but fundamentally, they should be.
Yeah, they should be the same.
Consistent.
Correct.
And what was the date of the exhibit four plans that were submitted to hack, three twenty-three twenty?
Yes.
Oh, three twenty-three.
And madam chair, I, I can email those to you right now if you would like.
That would be great, yeah.
Yeah, that'd be good for us to see.
Can you send them to Nikki?
What, what's the email address?
Uh, hold on, cuz I don't think I can access it here.
Why don't you, I'll, I'll log in with Zoom, have him send, uh, send it to WSAAD.
I'm sorry, WSAAD?
Yeah.
Yep.
At nantucket hyphen ma dot G O V.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
I didn't realize we didn't have these, there's so much paper.
I think that's part of the job, give us so much paper, we don't know what we're looking at.
Yeah.
Okay, sent.
Okay.
I'm sure, I'm just gonna excuse myself for a moment.
Okay.
Nikki, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm ready to share.
Uh, okay, um. You can share it, about two minutes, Leslie gets out for a second, I sit down.
Do I have to vote myself?
Leslie, if Lisa has to leave at one. What does that mean?
I have to excuse myself. In the meeting, I'm done. I know there's not voting, you don't need a quorum for anything.
Well, maybe we should, since none of us have had this exhibit for.
Right, and. And I don't feel like I can even see it that well. I'm sorry to say, I'm old, but I probably want a copy of it, I may to like, really.
Yeah, all right, so why don't we adjourn then, um. Get, get copies of the exhibit for any put together, whatever. Comments or concerns, deficiencies, we may see, for those, we can address that the next meeting. Um, the June eighth meeting will only be like a regular meeting, we're not gonna talk about serve-side crossing, because we have. A full agenda of other things that we need to. Yeah, we do, we do.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask.
Is there anything else that we think that we don't have that we need to make sure we have?
So I have. I have a handout, this is what was sent to Jesse for his review, which I reached out to him, he said to me today that he thinks he'll be ready. Around the eight, so I, I had told him that it most likely wouldn't be in a meeting, but we could schedule one. Based around that.
Um. Yeah, why don't we try to schedule, why don't we try to schedule something for, I mean, if we can, if we have the exhibit four now. Do you wanna try to meet again to talk about that this week, or is that too much?
Um, we do have to post it for you, that was enhanced, so that's not really.
Okay, yeah, oh, yeah, that's already.
Why, why can't we do it on?
Friday.
I don't think I can do it.
Friday's gonna be.
We do it early next week?
Yeah, we do it early next week. So it's today, Tuesday, you wanna do, wanna do this, you wanna do Tuesday?
I can't do Tuesday, I have a. I think I have another board meeting that runs on morning.
That would be the fourth. I can do Monday, the third. Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm wrong, I'm off, yeah, yeah.
Sunday's the fifth, Monday's Tuesday's the sixth.
Tuesday, that's right, I'm sorry.
Yes, this one's gonna be bye-bye, so.
I could do Monday, the fifth. Or, or Wednesday, the seventh.
What about everybody else?
I can do Monday for two hours if it starts to look.
Yep, same.
I gotta check my paper calendar. I gotta check my paper calendar, I don't keep things on my own. I'm a dinosaur.
I can do, I could do, uh. I could do Monday, I'll have to move something around, but I could do Monday like eleven to eleven.
That's fine.
What about Lisa?
Well, probably, I'm not sure I can, I'll, I'll, I'd be a maybe.
Okay, what about you, Jim? You can?
Can you guys create clarity though on my status? On the board's function?
Yes.
I am here, cuz I didn't get a response.
Oh, if I need to. Well, you're, you're definitely. I think all the appointments go through the end of June, so at least.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah.
Okay, so, okay, so we're adjourned? How about Nicky?
And the regular meetings at one o'clock?
On Thursday.
I mean, I'm just thinking you want to go into early that next week, so you'll have the Chesia report, like the week of the twelfth.
This is a lot to cover in one, in one.
I think we should do two, cuz I have two shorter ones, I don't wanna waste Chesia's time or Bracken's with talking this stuff. So the eighth, they're starting at one? Yes. And the fifth, hopefully, will be eleven.
Eleven.
And you'll let us know, cuz everybody's available, just Johnny's gonna meet you right now.
I might maybe too.
Oh, I need to.
Oh, okay. Okay, I'll get back to see what Chesia will be reviewing.
Okay, yeah, so, um. Someone make a motion to adjourn, please. Okay, so made a seconded, um. So, uh, myself, I, Lisa. I, Michael. Jim.
Well, did he get, um, record comments?
Thanks, everyone.